We have sign-ups for public comment. If anyone would like to public comment, please sign up at the main desk here.
...
Good evening and welcome to the Everett School Committee Regular Meeting for Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. The time is 6:32. Mr. Clerk, if you could call the roll to determine a quorum.
Mr. Almeida Barros.
Present.
Ms. Babcock.
Present.
Ms. Barros.
Present.
Ms. Cornelio. Ms. Cristiano.
We couldn't hear you, Ms. Cristiano.
Ms. Cristiano. I did hear, she did say she's here, okay. Mayor Di Maria. Mr. Dinoffrio.
Present.
Ms. Garen.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Madam Chair.
Present.
Eight members present.
Eight members present. We do have a quorum. I would just like to let everybody know that the mayor gives his regrets. He had a scheduled conflict. Margaret Cornelio also couldn't attend this evening. And Kelly St. Fort, our student rep, has a scheduling conflict as well. With that, if everyone could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Roman numeral three, reading of the records for Monday, February 3rd, 2025.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barros, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to waive the reading for Monday, February 3rd, 2025, and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Eight zero, motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral four, public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barros, seconded by Mr. Barros, to open public comment. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano. Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Eight zero, motion passed. We have open public comment. Seeing no speakers on the list, is there anyone that would like to speak? In the audience? Seeing none.
Make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Barros, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to close public comment. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano. Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Eight zero, motion passed. We have closed. Eight zero, motion passed. We have closed public comment. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral five, report of the student representative.
Okay, seeing the student rep isn't here and doesn't have anything for us to read, the next order of business.
Roman numeral six, report of the superintendent. Item number one, superintendent's update. Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the committee and our audience at home and here in the school at Everett High School, I have several updates to provide you this evening, one of which is more of a kind of at-home issue. This past Thursday morning, the Everett Administration Building, that housed offices, not only the offices of the superintendent, but all the support staff, was closed due to a significant water breakage in the building that damaged several floors of one side of our building. The fire department had responded to an alarm about 5:40 on Thursday morning. I was in the building about 10 or 6:00. The water had been flowing for a short time, but enough to damage several floors of the offices on Vine Street. So what we did was, we contacted several of our senior staff who have our employees that take home laptops, and we deployed information out to everybody about working from home until we could assess the damage. And we redirected our phone lines from offices to individuals who were responsible for that. We had a plan in place already that we had just instituted over the winter months, which we're actually still in winter months should the occasion arise that we had to keep people home. And as of Monday morning, we've set up shop, if you will, in three locations across the district in kind of shared space. So I'm here at Everett High School along with our immediate office, Dave O'Connor and Denise Codillo, who serve the superintendent's office. We are in a single office that was occupied by the vice principal, who's moved over and sharing the office with the principal. We had eight cubicles that had just been recently put together in what was the storage center to house some of our additional staff here at the high school. We've used them for all of our finance department, which is led by our deputy superintendent. And at the Devon School, we've utilized a classroom space for 11 members of staff under Dr. Adams' division of academics. And the human resource offices in the Adams School, in the basement, which was once the maintenance office and storage. So we quickly set up shop, and I want to thank our custodial staff in particular. They did an enormous amount of very quick work establishing workstations in those three locations that I mentioned, and have accommodated us quite nicely. Our IT staff quickly redirected all kinds of IT support, so we were able to be fully functional in person on Monday morning. Mr. O'Connor communicated with staff remotely from Thursday and Friday to let them know what was happening. We are in the process of, so the building has been what we would call remediated. All of the damage, for the most part, has been removed. The building is kind of curing, if you will, for seven days. We have to wait for everything to dry. Some significant damage on our beautiful wooden floors that were once part of that original building, and some of our, obviously our furnishings, and some of our computers, and even some of our, you know, storage of files. So that is all in process, and now we will have the insurance adjuster here, I believe tomorrow, and they'll make an assessment as to what the insurance will cover for damages in the building. The water has been shut off to the building, electricity is off, and as I said, the people who've been in there have been remediating it and removing. And now we're just trying to avoid any further damage by mold and other items that may suffer for not removing the damaged stuff. So we don't know the length of time that will be, but as I said, we are fully functioning, and people can get to us. I would say the kind of the public piece of that is our building is often the site where young folks come to get working papers, and we would just, I think we're going to have it on our website as well. If a student that is not attending at Everett High School and wants working papers, they can come to Everett High School, and we'll service them right out of the guidance, really, but they'll come into the main office, and we'll take care of them from there. We've redirected mail and deliveries, you know, to this building, and we're kind of setting up a network. And again, thanks to all the people who have been so helpful to make this difficult time quite easy. So I will keep you updated, but for now, the Administration Building on 121 Vine Street is closed for day-to-day business. It is now redirected in the three locations I just mentioned. I also was asked by a member of the committee, Ms. Garen, during this kind of uncertain time that we've heard from our national leaders about the future of federal funding, and we, as a district, like most districts across this state anyway, receive federal funds for a number of programs that support the work that we do each and every single day. Some of those funds come in the form of Title Grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, and you know, I've made a big effort to use Title I funds to support reading across the district, and Dr. Adams has initiated a plan to use those funds. We have a total of 13 federal funds that come into the district to support the various programs that we have across the district. There are basically millions of dollars in total, and what we would be doing is, just so you get an idea of process, funds come to us as a result of reimbursements from the states. So the federal funds flow to the states, states to the districts. We draw down from those funds via the state through DESI, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Those are done on a regular basis so that we kind of reimburse for the expenses or support the expenses connected to any particular grant. The concern, I think, that Ms. Garen had, and I know many of you have, is what happens if? It's a big question, right? Millions of dollars. How do you make up those millions of dollars should something occur that interrupts that flow of funds? Now, we are pretty well-funded currently with our federal dollars and the state dollars that we get to run what we do, and we have budgeted pretty well. If something should occur, I think that we have enough time to understand how to manage any change. A lot of the federal funding now, and I think, Ms. Garen, if you don't mind me saying, when she and I first communicated via email, there was 13, I think, funding, excuse me, there was more than 13, but there was 89 funding sources that were up for defunding, if you will, or the funding flow was going to stop. It didn't have anything to do with us at that moment in time, but many of those were, had a stay. So a federal judge or a local judge put a stop on it so that no action would happen as a result of an executive order. We do know that there are other actions yet to be unfolded, and we don't know what they will be. And if they are seemingly threatened to any of the 13 that we have, I think it's fair to say that there's enough energy and support, even amongst congressional leaders that may share the same party with our president, that aren't necessarily in favor of defunding programs that are very significant to their districts, which support our young people in particular. With that, there would come, you know, the same kind of stays or injunctions that the courts would impose upon any of these cuts or slowdowns. So I'm not trying to, I have a breakdown, and I'm happy to supply it to Ms. Garen, as I promised, and I've shared some of that with the chairperson already. We now have identified every dollar that comes in. I mean, we always knew, but I have it on a nice flow chart that you can see where it comes from. And should anything get impacted, we'll be able to react. We'll know what it affects. We'll know how it hurts a program if that's the case. So I appreciate your question, and it kind of put us on alert to be sure that we were paying attention to all those pieces of the federal dollars while we don't feel, quote, "threatened" today. It was a great exercise for us to review, to understand our exposure if there was to be any drastic changes in the federal flow of dollars. But I think all of you have probably followed the news that a lot of those executive orders in particular, and certainly other statements that have been made, have slowed down because, again, the judges have gotten involved and kind of put a stop to it, at least temporarily. So with your patience, I'll be happy to send that document out to you, and we can, you can have, you know, give me a shout, and we can go through that. But I hate to say that we're in jeopardy, but it's a good action to be aware of, and we know what that means. There's a lot of uncertainty, but I really can't make a plan with so much out there. So all I can do is understand what would happen if, and then you look down, as you'll see this chart, if this actually happens, and what that means to Everett. I have that for you. So I just wanted to say that generally. I didn't want to get into the weeds this evening. I don't want to alarm people in our district who know that some of the work that we do is funded through these grants. But we, as you know, the federal cycle, the fiscal cycle goes through September 30th, and as many of you know, and I know many of you follow this, and I'm looking at Member Barros, who's right on top of it on a local level, too. You know, the likelihood of stuff that's approved by Congress of getting taken away from us is pretty hard to do. I mean, Congress still has the power, right? So I think that we have some time, God forbid there was some real movement, to make a plan. So I do appreciate the opportunity to just say that generally, to kind of allay any concerns, at least in the short term. And certainly, if there was something down the road, I think we're aware of what that could mean for Everett, and then I would come back to you with a very strategic response to any threat to our dollars. But as of today, we have not been notified that we're losing any money. We have not been notified not to spend any money. We have not been notified that we should watch out. I mean, it's just, we're following the rhetoric and paying attention. So I want to thank Member Garen for bringing that up, and to the chairperson, who's kind of worked alongside me in these conversations internally, and the staff that's helped me assemble what I think is a pretty good, I don't want to call it a cheat sheet, but I have a kind of a cheat sheet in front of me that helps guide us so I can know where the big buckets are. So if there's no immediate questions, I'll go on to the rest of my report.
Ms. Garen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just thank you, Mr. Hart, for speaking out about that so the public knows. I know we had talked a little bit over email. Of course, this does affect me personally. My children benefit massively from the special ed department in Everett. They've really been, it's been really wonderful for them. And I know there's a lot of people in a similar position who are concerned, and I'm glad to know that we're aware of this, and we're staying on top of this, and hopefully, common sense will prevail, and we'll just keep working as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garen. Ms. Babcock.
I just want to say thank you for that update as well, because it was definitely concerning to me, given the shift in budget spending and conversation at the federal level. It sounds like, I'm just going to, it's not really a question, I'm just going to rephrase it and see if I'm correct. It sounds like if there were a need, you would be able to make an adjustment. Or there's a, you have a thinking pattern.
I would have a pattern, yes.
Okay.
Right. And I mean, if it was so drastic, let me just take it to the other end, and I don't want to opine on things that I'm not, you know, sure would happen. But under the very rear... But under the very rare option that we would lose significant dollars, we would have to review what we do for business in Everett Public Schools and every district would be in the same boat. We would be no different. We just happen to get, you know, when Ms. Garen mentions federal dollars for special ed, we get two point, almost 2.5, 2.3 million dollars annually from the feds to support our special ed department. And, but some of this also is supported by state funds. And, you know, our governor and this, and the Commonwealth has been very upfront in supporting education and has certainly given us a reason to have a little sigh of relief that we know that the state may also step in should we ever get to that point, and I'm hoping that we never do.
May I ask a question about the, the water damage? So I want to say, I'm glad that you had your winter plan in place. Who, who knew that the frozen water would be the winter plan? I've had that circumstance happen to me in my workplace before and it was not pleasant at all. But they, we did get back on track. Was there anything damaged beyond, you know, structural things and computers? Was there any student records or records that are, or employment records that were, are significant, important, damaged in the process?
No, the only thing that I think we saw, some miscellaneous paperwork that was open in the Human Resource Office, but those can be things that we maintain in, you know, in the cloud, so we would, we'd just have to reprint them. There is a service that's provided through insurance that would do document recovery, but the document has to be at least legible to recover. And when water seeps on things that come through your printer, it just dissipates, so it's, it's a mush. But all of the employment records that we keep paper copies for, and some things, we do both. We keep a paper copy, for example, of a quarry, because we're required to do that, but we also have it in employees' electronic file. Those were not damaged. So, so knock on wood, yes, we, we do not, we did another inventory this morning of the Human Resource. There was one on the file cabinet that we wanted to double-check and those records were intact.
Thank you very much. You know, walls can be fixed.
Yes, correct.
It can be fixed and everybody's okay. So that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Superintendent, I want to thank you for that description that you gave regarding the federal grants. It was perfect. And I just want to remind my colleagues, as the superintendent mentioned, and members of the public, both on the state level and on the federal level, when the, when the head of the executive branch, in this case, the governor here and the president in Washington, DC, when they write an executive order, the executive order cannot override state law if it's done by the governor, and if it's done by the president, cannot override Congress. Those federal appropriations that we have, that the superintendent described very well, were appropriated by Congress. What the president has done, and he's been doing for this past four months, is many, signing many executive orders that causes more confusion and chaos than actually has a value or it's a legal document. So they, both the state attorney in general, Andrea Campbell, and the governor's office through the Department, the Executive Office of Education are following these updates and these orders that come from DC, because the appropriation that we have at this moment was already appropriated by Congress. So could be the current president, another president, they could write 100 executive orders. That's why the judge, as the superintendent mentioned, put a stop, because it's illegal to stop money that was already appropriated by Congress. Currently, the House and the Senate are going to present very soon a new budget that will start October 1st. If a lot of those programs that they fund currently, they decide to defund or to reduce funding, then it would be a concern that we would have, starting on October 1st. But right now, I'm glad that the superintendent has a plan in place. But I personally am not that concerned that we would lose any funding at this moment, one, because the state's falling closely, but also the state attorney in general, because that funding was already appropriated by Congress. So even this president or any other president signing any document that they can do, it's more of a threat and it's more causing chaos than having any legal ground. So I just want to share that, as the superintendent described very well, because when we read the things on the news, oh, they're going to defund because we funded this, they're going to defund us or cut funding because we funded that, the president has no power, even though he thinks he does, to do that, unless of Congress, of course, Congress, starting October 1st, decides to do something different. Then we should be concerned. But at this moment, the courts will stand in their way and funding will continue coming, at least until the end of September. Just want to make that clarification, as the superintendent described well. But it's good that members of the public that gets, of course, we as school committee members get, you know, afraid or scared that we're going to lose funding, what's going, what's going to happen. Of course, the president issue an executive order, but legally, that's the other side of the story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Babcock.
Through you to Mr. Barrows. Thank you for that clear and simple explanation of executive policy for everybody. It's, it's well appreciated and it's certainly our relief to know that we have a little bit of leeway here and a little bit of comfort, at least till October. So thank you very much.
Sure. Bye.
Thank you. And real quick from the chair, if I may. Mr. Superintendent, thank you for talking me through this. And if your flow chart is not, when it enters a not draft form, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with the committee, that'd be great.
I'm happy to do so.
Because I like, I like seeing things and it was very, it explained things very well.
Sure, I'm happy to do so.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any further questions regarding this topic? All right, Superintendent?
Thank you very much. Everett High School's participation and prominence in the Boston Debate League's debate and Espanol Division continues to grow. I'd like to thank the leadership of our advisors, Ruth Cardona Suarez and Catalina Ramos. We have two additional students that will compete in Elizabeth Rivera and Nathalie Romero. They've earned spots in the championship semifinals for debate, and that's going to occur on Thursday of this week, the 27th. And then finals are slated for the following week on March the 7th at the Museum of Science. We have an impressive group of young people that have participated in the past, thanks to the leadership of those two folks that I mentioned. And we will continue to see our students engage in, in very energized debate. So I'll keep you updated as to their outcomes when those finals and semifinals are complete. I know that from time to time, I like to report on attendance to all of you, because it has been a personal goal of mine, along with the support of the district's principals and staff. Once again, our overall attendance, while not the, the superior that we had hoped, we are still far ahead of what we were last year at this time. We're at almost 91% attendance rate, which is a good rate. And chronic absenteeism is down, when I say down, meaning the, the, the young people that are chronically absent continues to decrease. So we are continuing to focus on that. We have monthly meetings with a wide variety of people, just as a reminder. We have student voices, we have parent voices, we have folks that come in and talk to us about other strategies. We look at strategies across the nation, because this isn't, as I've always told you, isn't an Everett problem. And so our, our schools are actively engaged in some simple strategies to outright, you know, calling parents themselves, messaging, having events at school that include parents, having events that, you know, get kids engaged in the process with reward. So there's a lot more focus and attention, attention on attendance, and I think it's, it's showing up. Now, this is what we would call the, I guess it's termed "spring slip," where young people or decide that they get a little spring fever and may want to take an extra day here and there, where we're looking at different ways in which to keep them engaged in the school experience. Tiredness has certainly also been addressed, as well as outright absenteeism. And again, we have initiatives in place to encourage young, young folks to get to school on time. So it's paying off and I'll continue to keep you abreast of this. Boys' basketball last night, I was in attendance with, Ms. Babcock was there, and members of a huge contingent from Everett, where our boys' basketball were in a tournament against Boston College High School. Although we did not prevail last evening, we had an impressive season with our boys, our girls. We had a wonderfully engaged coaching staff across basketball, and we see the energy and excitement with our students. It's not always about winning, it's about how they play and the team spirit and the cooperation that the, or I should say, the, the fans that come are usually, so for girls' basketball, a lot of the boys show up and conversely, boys' basketball has a lot of the girls show up. And we had a lot of team spirit last night. Would you not agree, Ms. Babcock?
Add to that, I want to say that, that Everett rolled in strong and the 30-some-odd cheerleaders were just incredible.
Yes, phenomenal.
And I want to thank them for being there and keeping the energy up for the whole game, because they were great. We, you know, I, I have to say, there may have been more of Everett than there was at BC High there yesterday.
We made a great showing last night and we have great attendance.
Stressful and fun.
It was very stressful, I agree.
But, but definitely very proud of the boys and our community.
So Tide Rises, as we always mention on a monthly basis, we have students that are recognized here at the high school library. Those students get nominated by faculty and staff because they have exhibited one of the attributes of, of our Tide Rises program. This month, it was self-awareness. So we had the largest number of, of awardees, if you will, or recognized, 19 students, which meant 19 faculty members and staff members took time and recognized the student that exemplified the trait in self-awareness. And we are building fine young men and women at Everett High School. This program is just one way to acknowledge that. I have included the, what I usually put at ear desk, Dave puts together some pictures of the folks that, and events that we have taken in the previous week or two. So we had, we have teachers and parents that often come to these programs. They get a little, little trinket and acknowledgement along with their certificate for the fine, the fine young men and women that they are, and they're notified, noticed for that. So I, I, I want to thank all the organizers of that and all the teachers and staff who continually acknowledge our students in this way. We also had the Teddy Peanut Butter Challenge. As you all know, Teddy Peanut Butter Headquarters is here in Everett and they sponsor an annual event, and it's hosted down here in the Crimson Cafe. And our students, mostly culinary students, participate in this challenge in which students put together, and it doesn't have to be a dessert, it could be a food item, and with, made with peanut butter. And there are judges from our own staff and the Teddy Peanut Butter Company. And our students put together a great, a great afternoon and some delicious treats. And so we do that annually. And so the winners, because we have to pick a winner with judges, was our junior, Jen Garcia. Jen, actually, I talked with her today as well. She made a churro stacked with peanut butter, mousse, and chocolate ganache, which was phenomenal. And then another junior, Milton Garcia, he made a spicy peanut butter and orange chicken skewer over noodles. So again, it doesn't have to be a dessert, it's a food item. And they really put their heart and soul into it and they were recognized by the folks from Teddy Peanut Butter. And I want to thank Teddy for being a peanut butter, for being a great partner here in Everett. Music events, March is the National Music in Our Schools Month, and we have a lot planned for, as you can imagine, with the robust music program that we have. And we have String Night, which is coming up on March the 4th and on March the 6th, and those are broken up by grades. And these performances will be held here at the high school auditorium, and they all begin at 6 o'clock. We'll have that additional information on our website, as well as, we will be doing some social media surrounding, I think it's already out, Dave, on the, the March 4th. So we're using social media also to get to a wider audience, and we see some great responses from that. We're also planning a Family University. We haven't done this here, I guess, in a number of years, but it's been traditionally called in the past Parent University, for those of you who either have heard about or participate in it. So now we're going to call it Family University, and it's going to be held on Wednesday, March 26th, at the Lafayette School from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. All pre-K to 8 families will be invited to attend a free program that will give folks in multiple languages, by the way, opportunities for the parents and the caregivers to sign up for a number of different, I'll call them workshops. They're about 45-minute and they can select which ones they want to participate. We'll offer some food and allow our parents some time to take some additional information in a, in a more personal way. They'll, they'll come to the school and actually hear from professionals across many topics, from understanding your child's eye-ready, promoting bilingual education at home, supporting your student with math. So these are very specific ways in which parents can support their young, their students through any one of these little sessions that will help them understand the role. And finally, our, maybe not finally, but our next regular meeting is going to be March 3rd. So as you know, we're kind of off-cycle this, this week. So tonight is a Tuesday. We will meet next Monday, back on our cycle of regular meeting times. I guess it's been a practice of to, to not hold the regularly scheduled school committee during a school vacation week, if it should occur in that cycle, and in this case, it did. So we didn't have a meeting last week. Monday last night was a city council meeting, so we don't hold meetings two nights, the same meeting, the same night having two governmental meetings. So we were meeting tonight. However, our cycle now starts again next, next week on, on March the 3rd. And finally, as you may all know, I have presented a couple of scenarios in the past about graduation day. And graduation has, has been a time when we bring people together as a community, and I know this last year, we made it a very inclusive event by translating, having live translation, having all kinds of opportunities for people to participate and find a more meaningful way of participation. What we didn't realize, or at least was never brought to our attention, is that we had a number of students that can't participate on a Saturday because of religious reasons. And last year, we had at least six that we're aware of that had communicated that they would not be able to participate. This year, we already have a couple of families who have communicated with the school principal that they cannot participate on Saturday. So I'm informing you that I'm going to change the date to June the 4th, which is a Wednesday evening. I've spoken to the police chief, I've spoken to the chair of the board, I've spoken to DESI. I have, as you know, on the school calendar, it is an asterisk that this is subject to change, the date. We fall within the timeline that we can hold graduation. But this gives us an opportunity to allow every student who wants to participate in the ceremony to be part of it. I don't care if it was one. We have to give them an opportunity to participate. And these young boys and girls couldn't do that this past year, and, and for that, I'm deeply sorry. So this year, I would like to hold it on June the 4th, and I will have an internal meeting of the graduation committee here at Everett High School to plan that out and give everyone an opportunity to participate and have a stellar graduation. So that is my report, Madam Chair.
Any questions?
Make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. Let's see. Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, and thank you, Superintendent, for the update. I fully agree, we should have that on a Wednesday. When you don't have at least one family who can participate, we shouldn't do it. I just want to say that you might get a call from some superintendents, because I've shared your success with several educators in a meeting with the Secretary of Education regarding school attendance. There's a lot of superintendent's concern, especially with the latest initiatives from the federal government. So there are a lot of school districts concerned with attendance and kids not showing up. And I said, well, you need to learn what Everett is doing. So, sorry.
Thanks.
Sorry. But you might get a few calls. Sorry. But you might get a few calls.
Thank you.
Because I shared in that meeting with the secretary and other superintendent schools.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Any other questions of the superintendent? If I may, from the chair, real quick. Regarding tardiness and attendance, I know I've asked before of the superintendent, some phone calls don't differentiate between late or absent, which creates panic with a parent when you're getting a phone call and you don't know the difference, to just make sure that schools consider making that different.
We are trying, that's with the software. And thank you for mentioning that. And the other thing it doesn't do is if you have more than one child in the district, it doesn't differentiate the child. So if you get a call and you're a parent and happen to be at work and it says, your child is either absent or tardy, first of all, you don't know if they're absent or tardy. And secondly, you don't know which child it is if in fact you have more children in the district. So that is an issue that we are addressing with the company that provides that service so that we can differentiate tardy, we can differentiate, because it's by around 9:00 that they get those calls. We know the time, we know the message, but when you think about it, it isn't clear enough. So we are working with them to change that. So thank you for also mentioning that tonight.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Any further questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the report of the superintendent.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Barrows, to accept the superintendent report and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
8-0, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Item number two is I'm requesting your approval of Everett High School's Career Technical Education Admissions Policy. That was shared with you in the packet. Just as a quick overview, and if there's any more specific questions, our director is here with us this evening, Siobhan Araya. But this document is just, there were some clerical changes, but it's about a rotation of exploratory. It's a change that was, we gave our students more options to succeed. And the timing of our scheduling was reviewed and changed. And some of the language that we knew we needed to have clarity on, we changed to really match the statewide language and policy. So those are the two major, and I may not have explained it exactly the way you may want to hear, and I'm certainly happy to have Siobhan come up. But it just puts us in line with supporting our students and making it clear what the expectation is and matches the policy that the states require us to follow. So I'd ask for your approval unless you have a question.
Mr. Barrows.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, you, I'm sure, know that DESI is voting tonight, same time as we are meeting now.
Yes.
On proposed change that the governor is proposing regarding vocational schools admission slash CTE programs, which has been a long time coming because that's been unions, advocates in schools asking for that kind of change. How does that change that DESI is considering tonight align with this that we are voting tonight? And if, are they similar? Or in case that DESI approves those changes, again, we go to a second vote because they still need going, to go through a public comment period.
Right.
But in case that they approve, are we have to go back and adjust this based on those changes? Or should we wait or not?
Yeah, no, I think this is fine because this is just getting this ready. But I did look at the proposed changes and I didn't match them one to one, but they didn't seem, because we got a final draft, or a final copy, if you will, today through the commissioner's office. And it's, they have now a listening tour on the proposed policy. I did forward it to Siobhan Araya and the principal. So they're going to look at it probably much more in depth. But on the surface, it doesn't appear to have any huge difference from what we have. But I couldn't be detailed at this point because I haven't gone through the whole document. But accepting this is really, and I don't want to reduce it, it's a, it's a housekeeping in some cases, so it's not, it's not really policy change. It's a procedural change internally about how we schedule our students with rotation. So the policy that dictates CTE is not being changed by this document. This is how we in Everett follow the guidelines at this point and make that language more closely aligned. But the real activity change is what we do with rotation.
Okay, got it.
Gives our students more options to explore the programs that we currently have. Now we have, you know, X number of programs here, so they have a chance to rotate through that to see which they like. And we want them to get at 75 percentage. You see everything you needed to see, then you make the selection.
Got it.
So we're not going to be inconsistent ultimately with any change that's proposed the way I read it.
And if there is any change that--
I'd come back here.
--this is approved, we can come back. All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Yes. So I'd request your favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Babcock?
The rotation that you're discussing, is there a particular spot that we should address our eyes to in this document?
If you go to, let me get to the page. The program selection process kind of details when, in the exploratory ninth grade. So these blocks that you see there, in effect, tell you what a student would take or what they would do in each of those grades. So the rotation in, and Siobhan's here and maybe she can be much more articulate in that, if you don't mind bringing Siobhan up.
Make a motion to--
She can be very specific about that.
Ms. Araya?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Mr. Barrows, to invite CTE Director Siobhan Araya before us. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Araya.
Thank you.
Siobhan, I was killing it, so I want you to make sure it's clear.
It was very good. So are there any specific questions? Or do you want me to explain how exploratory works? Is everyone familiar with exploratory at this school and how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
At least I am.
Okay. So I can actually briefly say that exploratory is an eight-day cycle, all freshmen, unless they are in the seed academy. So the STEM slash seed academy, they can opt out of it. They go through for eight days and then they rotate through to the next program. So for example, on one of these pages, there is a little graphic and it kind of outlines the process of where they're going. So they might start in marketing and then after eight days in that class, they'll rotate to employability. And then they'll rotate from there to hospitality management. And they go through all of the rotations. And then the last rotation is a redo of the first rotation and we use that for students to make up work that they might have missed in a previous rotation. So that last rotation is really helpful for students who may have been absent for medical reasons or for just personal reasons. And they didn't like their grade in a specific rotation, they can always make up that work. And that's also the rotation that we do, the program selection in as well. So that's a very brief recap of exploratory.
Ms. Babcock?
Could you just explain what the change in the rotation was that Superintendent Hart was talking about?
So the last rotation, rotation 10, so we have 10 rotations. We have nine classes, I would say. We have eight Chapter 74 CTE programs. We added in a ninth rotation called Employability Skills because it's important for students to have employability skills when they're going to college or the workforce. So that last rotation, rotation 10, is a redo that will allow students to make up work. And we do this for a lot of different reasons. Mostly, it's for equity. So that students who want to improve their grade in a specific rotation, maybe they were absent for that rotation, they can make up that grade. And that could just be a student who really wants to get into culinary and they need that 75 to get in and maybe they're at a 71. That last rotation allows them to contact the teacher and then make up that work to get over that threshold to be eligible for the lottery.
Ms. Babcock?
Just for the public, if you would explain that 75%, just for the folks that are listening. We see it on the paper, but they could hear it as well. That would be helpful.
Absolutely. So we at Everett High School have a lottery system for all CTE programs. So there is no contacting students to get in. We do not do that. And that is one of the changes that the department is talking about, is across the board, having a lottery system for every school in the state of Massachusetts. And we are already doing that here and we're not changing that. And in this document, you won't see that highlighted anywhere. We're not taking the lottery away. That is the fairest way to allow students into our programs. So to be eligible for our programs, you need to pass exploratory, which means go through all eight rotations and then the, or all nine rotations, and get a 60 overall. So all of your quarterly grades are averaged out into a final grade for the year. If you pass, that's step one. Step two, when you fill out the acceptance, application, the grade you need to be eligible for that specific program is a 75. So if you rank your top eight and your first choice is culinary and your second is hospitality management and your third is marketing, if you got a 75 in culinary and that's your first choice, you'll go into that lottery automatically. If you passed exploratory with a 60 and then passed culinary with at least a 75. And we have rubrics available as well. I'm happy to share those with you. Those have not changed since the last policy approval. So that is the same as was voted in last year.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Nope. Make a motion to excuse our gas to focus on my tanks.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Barrows, to excuse CTE Director Siobhan Araya. Araya, I'm sorry. Roll call. I added an R.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes, and thank you.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation with the CTE admission policy.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to accept the approval of the Everett High School's Career and Technical Education Admission Policy. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
8-0, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Item number three, acceptance of, and in your packet and on your agenda, it says $600 in donations from individuals in memory of Leo Barrett. As you know, Leo Barrett was the father of our school principal, Chris Barrett, to be directed to the general scholarship fund. But once this was printed, we had a check that wasn't calculated. It should be 850. So I'd ask you to amend the amount to 850 and then accept it to go into the general scholarship fund.
Make a motion to accept the $850 donation from individuals in the memory of Leo Barrett.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Barrows.
If I may, I'll make a motion to edit the agenda, instead of 600 to 850 dollars first.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to amend the agenda to reflect 850 dollars in a donation as opposed to 600 dollars. Roll call.
Madam Chairman, on the motion?
Yes, Ms. Cristiano.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to speak favorably on this. Leo Barrett was a true Everett, son of Everett. I mean, you know, we all know Chris is his son, but Leo was, has been invested in Everett his entire life before his passing. He raised his family here in Everett. He had a cab taxi company here in Everett. But more importantly, he was committed to public service. You know, he served on the common council here in Everett as well as the Board of Alderman. And I remember when he ran for mayor. So he's truly a favorite son of Everett and I can't think of a better way to salute him and honor him by this scholarship. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Words. Roll call, vote for the amendment?
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved.
So moved, motion passed. Is there a motion to--
Yes. Make a motion to accept the 850 donation from individuals in the memory of Leo Barrett.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Barrows, to accept the 850 donation from individuals in the memory of Leo Barrett to be directed to the general scholarship account. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
Eight in the affirmative, motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Item four, acceptance of a $2,000 grant from the Boston Children's Hospital Trauma and Community Resilience Center. This money, we use to train individuals here in our school district in school threat assessment. So I'd ask you to accept the $2,000.
Make a motion to accept the $2,000 grant from the Boston Children's Hospital Trauma and Community Resilience Center.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Barrows, to accept the $2,000 grant from the Boston Children's Hospital Trauma and Community Resilience Center. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
Eight in the affirmative, motion has passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Item number seven, items submitted by school committee members. Item number one, update on the feasibility study for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, also known as MSBA, which is due June. This is offered by Ms. Babcock.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes, I would just bring up the feasibility study and clarify for the public the steps of the process of the, of getting our, a possible new high school being built. I know we have passed through the first phase and the next part is to develop the feasibility report to see if this, we could move into the next phase. So if you could explain that to the public, that would be lovely.
Great. So the process started about 2021 when we were visited by NIAS, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And one of their findings, if you will, or observations, was that the current school building, this Everett High School, was not sufficient to conduct the kind of work that we're doing here and across the board as a comprehensive high school. So their recommendation was to look at a better use of space and more space. Then in 2023, the MSBA themselves did what they call a senior study, which is a walkthrough of this building and talk with staff in this building about what they do in the building, how they program it, the number of students. So they look at all the kind of demographic information. And they, in effect, would invite us to consider, as a city, as a community, to enter into the MSBA Building Authority process, which was done. And it was voted on December 13th, 2023, to authorize the city to enter into what they call the eligibility period for a new Everett High School. So as part of the eligibility period, I'm just going to kind of go quickly through it. The district and the city were asked to provide a number of items in order for them, the MSBA, to actually do the study, to actually look at the feasibility of building a new high school in this city with the information that they ask us, like any other district, to provide them to incorporate all that information into what they would use as a report to the community. So we've done, based on their guidelines and their timeline, in July, we had information that was due, which is a compliance certification. We had to establish a school building committee, which was formed, and we provided that in August, August 31st. We revised our Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Education viability document, which was done in September 30th of this past year. Then the eligibility period system access form, it just allows us to look at the information that's been submitted. So we've done that. Then there were enrollment questionnaires about what we saw for enrollment trends and we-- we provide those informations. We, those are documents also that are backed up, but what we provide to DESI with our enrollment current and what we've had. So that was done by September 30th. We've held enrollment meetings across the district with our folks in here, in the community. And then we provided documents also about our maintenance and capital items for this building. And then there is what they call evidence of the feasibility study vote by the city, which already occurred. So we, we are in the process, and we are now waiting for kind of the next steps by the MSBA. You're now invited, if you will, to go to the next step or the next phase of the process. The fact that we've come this far, I think, is, you know, an indication that they, the MSBA, believe that we should be proceeding, but we do receive official notification from them about next steps. So we had our part to do. We've done it. Now we wait on them to review that, those documents, and to look at the kind of big picture here, and we move forward. Now, don't forget to be invited to even participate in that, you know, several, more than several school districts. I think there were 13 at the time that we actually received the official invitation back in December of 2023 to move forward. So, you know, there's maybe 100 proposals by different districts. 13 or 14 got selected. We were one of them. So they see the value already, and then we then have to back it up with documentation that's provided on a, you know, on a timeline. And then they ask for clarification. They may ask us questions in between, but everything is submitted that we have to do at this point, and now wait to the next step of eligibility period is, is moved.
Ms. Babcock.
Do you, can you clarify what the next step of the eligibility period is, or?
I don't have that off the top of my head, because I wasn't really sure where you necessarily were going with this agenda item. I thought that you probably wanted a general. I didn't hear anything specific from anybody, but that is what I can tell you at this point. I think, you know, if, if you want to look, we can look it up and see what each of those phases mean. I'm sure it's on their website, but, and I know that you do a lot of research on your own, so I imagine that you probably maybe have done that already, but I wanted to let you know, I assumed that you wanted to know if we've met all the criteria up to this point, and we have.
Actually, I hadn't, I did try to do some research on it, and it was quite complicated. So I thought that I would go back to you as the expert, because I looked at it and I thought, wow, I'm an expert in education, but not an expert in building, surprisingly. So I found it quite complicated. So it's, it's not just one just document, it's many things through phases in the feasibility period, is what it sounds like.
Sure.
Am I correct in my understanding of that?
Yeah, there's many phases here.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Barrows.
We have the CFO from the city here, Mr. Dimon, and if there is anything that he would like to add to what the superintendent already described, I'd love to invite him to come before us. I'll make a motion to invite Mr. Dimon before us.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to invite Mr. Eric Demus before us to answer some questions regarding the feasibility study. Rule call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
So moved, motion passed. Welcome, Mr. Demus.
Good evening. Thank you. And first, I want to apologize, I forgot my suit jacket, so just wanted to offer my apologies. I actually don't have anything in addition to add. The superintendent did a fabulous job recapping what the school, the district, and the city have been working on. The only piece of information just-
Thank you. Welcome back. We apologize for the slight interruption as we've lost power. We will continue the regularly scheduled meeting. We are having a hard time getting Vice Chair Cristiano back into the meeting, so we'll just proceed as is, which means we don't have to do everything via roll call anymore. Ms. Babcock and Mr. Demus, take it away.
All I was saying is that the superintendent did an excellent job in covering where we are and how we got here. The only bit of information I just wanted to add was that in addition to all of the other enrollment and school-related data that we needed to provide to the MSBA as part of this process, the phase that we're in is we also did provide financial information to the MSBA for their review, specifically our outstanding debt, all of our statement of indebtedness, as well as potential future debt that we're going to have in future years. So they're in the process of reviewing all of the information that we have provided to them, and as the superintendent indicated, we're waiting to hear back from the MSBA once they complete their process to start the next phase and be invited into the feasibility phase.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Demus. Just one question, which I don't know if we are in that phase yet, but where is the space around the city that we are considering this building? Or I don't know if we got there yet with them, but where we are thinking about that this would be built?
So you're correct, we are not in that phase yet. That's in the feasibility phase that we're the next phase that we're going to be entering.
Got it. Got it. Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Any further questions? Ms. Babcock.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Demus, what the customer thinks.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Barrows, to excuse Mr. Demus. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Eyes have it. You're all set. Thank you, Mr. Demus. Ms. Babcock.
Good advice.
Avoid the elevator. Ms. Babcock, your pleasure.
Yes, I actually would just like to table this matter. One of the things I wanted to discuss tonight was I wanted to make the committee slightly more familiar with the DESI certification for nurses.
Would you like to refer the feasibility study item back to sponsor?
Oh, I'd like to return that to sponsor. Feasibility study returned to sponsor.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Mr. Barrows, to refer back to sponsor the update on feasibility study for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, which is due in June. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Item number two, discussion about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's certification process for school nurses offered by Ms. Babcock.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes, I wanted to familiarize the committee with the certification process, and there is a website that shows two possibilities, you know, doing it post-graduation from RN or doing it as a dual enrollment, and I wanted to be able to discuss. I have a constituent who is an RN, a DESI RN in another district, and they shared their experience and the benefit of being a DESI-certified nurse. I don't, what I was hoping that would be shared, or at least a copy of, was just so that you could see the process. If you look at it, it is very similar to what other DESI-certified educators would do, whether you're a nurse or whether you are a educator, it's a similar process, and I would have liked to have that in your hands so you could look at it. So I'd like to table the matter so that we could provide, just so that you could see the process and the link to the website so you could see it in advance, and then I'd like to share this constituent who's a DESI nurse's experience with you and the pluses that they have experienced in becoming certified, the professional benefits and the benefits for children, so that we're more, you know, up to date and understand really what that means. I'd like to share that next time and move, I'd like to make a move to table this so that we can share the link to the process.
You know, I would just add, if I could, from my position, you know, I explain what I thought the pros and cons with this. We're happy to share it, Ms. Babcock, but we don't do that now. So we, the nurses at the, in Everett would have to say they don't want to be servicing us any longer for us to take any additional steps. While I can appreciate where you're coming from, it may be for naught. I mean, we'd have to have those nurses say, "We don't want to be part of this, and we want to be, you know, your employee," and if that happens, we also have, they have to wait a certain number of months before they can join an additional or a different union to come to us. I just want to offer that because while we're laying this over again, or laying this over to another conversation, I'm not sure what we hope to do with it.
I guess I want to add too, like, would it become a conflict within unions? I know my husband's part of a union, so I, like, sometimes it's like school against city. I wonder if that would be a conflict.
I notice, Ms. Augur, I know that you represent the union and DESI, so maybe you could, can you share anything with us if you?
Okay. Invite Ms. Augur up to the meeting?
Yep.
Make a motion to invite?
Motion has been made and seconded to invite Kim Augur, the union president of the ETA, before us. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome, Ms. Augur. Sorry to put you on the spot. Thank you.
No, that's okay. I'm happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to specify that, first of all, we support our brothers and sisters that are part of our city union. We've worked with them before on some contract negotiations, but we are totally separate, you know, entities and unions. The biggest part of this would be that if they did decide not to be servicing our students any longer, and we decided to take them on, the school committee decided to take them on, on our end, they'd have to be disassociated from their union for six months before we would be able to take them on.
I knew there was a timeline, yeah.
So we wouldn't be able to, it's, I hate the word, but it would be considered raiding the union, and we wouldn't be able, we would not do that, nor would we want to give them that opportunity not to be protected by their union for that amount of time before they came and worked with us. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or at another school committee meeting, bring more information for you, but that would be our biggest concern.
Thank you. Ms. Babcock.
Is there anyone who could advise us? So, so all of the nurses that work for the city are in a union already?
Yes.
Basically, a professional union. I did not know that they were and that you would, union raiding, that is, I had no idea that that was an issue. I just wanted to continue to bring it up because I do think that there are certain benefits to it, but given that logistics, that does put a hold on it. My, I guess my question would also be, is there a possibility, and I think that I'm not prepared really for this, but is there a possibility or a conflict of interest in creating DESI nurse positions as well, to see if we could attract more nurses, you know, through the school hiring as well? I'm, just because we are quite short, I have seen the advertisements for it. It's lovely to see them everywhere. I have actually mentioned it to a few of my nursing students, you know?
Well, maybe, do you want me to answer? Or?
Yes.
Is that just a generic?
No.
So, so I think, you know, I think you probably heard, taking this action, or maybe even exercising this thought process, could be considered union busting, and I know you don't want to do that. You work at a university. I don't think that that would be a good thing to say. I think, I think you have to be careful with this. I thought I gave you a good enough reason to why I thought the way in which we are currently serviced is okay, not that I like having 11 nurses when we need 18, but I don't think what you're proposing, and I'm going to outright say it clearly, I don't think that that's going to get us any better yield of nurses in the schools. A, because of timeline, just as I think Ms. Augur suggested, they would, we would have to, in effect, I would imagine, and I'm just, hey, we don't want you here. Well, I'm not going to say that to anybody right now. Then if we go out to recruit nurses, we in effect would, to your point, be asking our new nursing staff that we would have to create our own division, if you will, and hire nurses, obviously at a higher rate, because that's what's going to bring them in, right, a higher dollar amount, to go through a testing, and maybe that's my personal bias. I mean, you know, I mentioned to you that the qualification for DESI nurses, they have to, they have to take the MTEL exam on communication. I know you and I talked offline about this. That doesn't make them a better nurse. That just means now you're DESI-qualified. They pass national exams. They take on statewide, or they take a state certification to be a nurse. They come to us that way. I'm glad that nurses in our district are willing to be paid what they get paid and do the job they do for us. We need more nurses. I know that the union has been working actively with the city to raise that wage to be more comparable to what nurses are paid right up the street at the former Woodin Hospital, now called Cambridge Health Alliance Everett. So that's the battle. I know other communities, as you mentioned last time, have DESI-certified, if you want to call them nurses. That's, that's maybe something they've been employing before the nursing shortage, and they're the same nurses. I don't know the history. All I know is Everett's been trying. We've been working diligently. They have supported our needs by augmenting it with outside nurses. It is costing the city a premium.
Ms. Garen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was actually at the city council meeting last night, and they had someone from HR come and talk about the nursing situation. And as far as DESI certification, if I'm correct, I believe there is an incentive, there's a financial incentive that if, if a nurse obtains DESI certification, there's, I believe it's like a one-time payment of $5,000. So, I mean-
By whom? Who pays the $5,000?
Oh, dear. I, I can't, I can't actually answer that. DESI grant, thank you.
Like an incentive, like we do with nurses, I mean, excuse me, staff that we are hiring?
Sorry. Yes, you can probably, you probably get a better idea if you watch the, the meeting from last night. I think you can look that up on YouTube, but, yeah, that's all.
Yeah, they've communicated with us about what, so the city's looked to us to reply to the same answers that you're asking. You know, it is about paying a wage that is comparable to attract nurses to Everett, and that's really, you know, adding this other layer in. I don't see currently the advantage to that. Yes, do I want more nurses to support what we're doing here? Absolutely. I don't, and I can, I think there's a process, and I think we're hearing part of the process may involve, you know, kind of union busting. We don't want to do that. I will respect the union position with the nurses. I'm not sure, quite frankly, I'm not sure quite frankly why we want to get into that, this, not fight, but I don't know why we want to get into this. I have, I can see, you know, I can see if we were trying to eliminate people to come to us, but we want to attract people, and I think this might be certainly a deterrent, but that's my point of view.
Ms. Babcock.
I just want to say, I want to thank Ms. Augur for explaining that, because I did not realize that there was this feasibility, you know, this period of transition that would, that would, would be completely ineffective. I did not realize that. That is why I brought this up, because I wanted to talk about it. I have spoken to, and there are a number of educators in our school system that are RNs, and they have said that they are getting better benefits through being educators than from being RN. So hopefully, the increase in salary that the, the city hall is proposing will attract more teachers to our district. The DESI, the DESI grant that encourages it, I heard about that at the university as well because the nurse shortage isn't just us. It's everywhere, hospitals, clinical sites. It's everywhere. So, you know, anything to make the position, you know, more attractive. I thought that being in a DESI position would make it more attractive, but given the union conflict situation, it seems a lot, it seems frankly quite impossible.
Maybe the city will consider an incentive, just like DESI's offering on a temporary basis at DESI.
That'd be lovely.
That would be lovely, right, but that's for them to figure out. We obviously have shared our concerns and shared our support, as I've explained to you in the past, that we want the nurses. We, we're helping recruit. We're doing everything we can to support that, and I want them in our, in our buildings. So we have them in our buildings, but it's, you know, if someone's out sick, then they're trying to, and as you know, our field trip policy, as it's come up, I can't have nurses leaving the building and leaving a building open when, to send 40 kids on a, on a field trip.
When there's 700 in a school.
Yeah.
No, I agree. I, I just, I'm thinking, all I'm thinking is, what can we do, given especially the overcrowding of our school systems, to attract an adequate number of nurses to cover the acuity of our schools? And it's, it's just not enough, and we know how important our school nurses are. So, and that we're, you know, paying Caltor nurses to step in where we can, but it's not enough to, to not have permanent nurses that have a relationship with the, with the students as well. You know, the school nurses are a key, is a key educator and provider in the school systems too, to be a place for the, for the students and their families. So, well, thank you for, go right there.
If I may, from the chair, is there anything stopping DESI-certified nurses from applying at City Hall?
No.
So anybody, any nurse could apply? Pretty much?
If-
There's nothing stopping, like, this specific-
If you are a nurse in another district that wanted to come to work for us, you could, whether you have a DESI certification or not. And the certification, let me remind you, is taking that test and applying for an additional license. So the nurse has to spend money to take a test, Communication and Literacy, which I've just finished school, don't, again, I'm not going to try to applying here, but, and another, an additional license to say they're a DESI nurse, to go to a district and apply for a job. The incentive, from what I think we're hearing, came from DESI. It was a DESI incentive program to attract nurses to become DESI-certified, but I, I don't think that, that would preclude a DESI-certified nurse from applying to a job at City Hall.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm assuming that that would be the case. No one's going to say no to them.
Any further questions? Mr. Barrows.
I have no question. Just take, Madam Chair. I have no question. I have just a comment that I, I actually thank my fellow school committee member from Ward 4 for bringing this up, because it is, we are just trying to find a solution for a problem that the superintendent is also trying to find. No one can deny that we do not have enough nurses available. So I think this discussion, which it's good, it brings us clarity, especially with union relations, it's, it's, it's a good discussion for us to have, because we are just trying, I believe that it's her intent, trying to find a solution for a problem that we have, and we don't seem to find, because that problem goes beyond us. It is an issue because we have a shortage of, shortage of nurses, not only in Everett Public Schools, but in hospitals across the state and across the country.
Right.
Right? COVID left, actually never left, still around, but left this, this issue for us to deal with. So I just wanted to commend, is the correct word, you for bringing this up, because you are just, this is not the solution for it, but I want to commend you for bringing this up, because that's one of the ways that perhaps you're trying to do, to see how we can solve this issue. But I think the issue, it is, it is bigger than us. It is an issue that is out there. It's a shortage of nurses, more than a shortage, a shortage of nurses who want to work for the Everett Public Schools, or the seat of Everett. So, thank you.
Ms. Babcock.
Through you to Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Thank you for your support of my bringing this up. The reason that I had bring it up, and it's, and it's unfortunate that it's not feasible, is that I, I, for, I do believe that, that there, it is attractive to, to, because the school systems that do have DESI-certified nurses, that those nurses do get paid more. They do have more vacation time. They are covered by the same benefits as the union. They get to also collaborate with the teachers. I'm sure they're collaborating now, because that's, we're all on the same level. So I just brought it up, and, and I did want to try to figure out a solution, because I know how important this is. And I've recently, you know, read quite a few articles. I have a number of students that are actually school nurses, and they are talking about how stressful it really is to be overburdened with, of lack of, of nursing teachers. And part of it goes back to the fact that there's not enough nursing educators to actually educate the nurses, to put them back out there as well. So it's, it is a huge circular problem that we, that they're, we're seeing in healthcare and in education, and I was, I was thinking that this is a more attractive method, but given the union conflict, that there's not, unless someone can think of a viable solution to that that doesn't break any union rules, which I certainly don't want to do, because I appreciate my union so much. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. From the chair, I also want to say, when you did reach out, you found factual information from the DESI website explaining the certification, shared it with me, and it was not printed for this evening. So for that, I apologize.
Make a motion to return to sponsor.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Mr. Barrows, to refer item number two, the discussion about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education certification process for school nurses, back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next-
Roman numeral eight, item one, Finance Negotiations Subcommittee Meeting from Monday, February the 3rd, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to access the Finance Negotiations Subcommittee report.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the Subcommittee report for Finance Negotiations from Monday, February 3rd, 2025, and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral nine, Bills and Payroll.
Make a motion to approve bills and payroll?
Submit first.
Submit, sorry.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $1,721,943.29. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, seven zero.
Seven zero, motion passed. Make a motion to pay bills and payroll. Second. Motion has been made and seconded to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $1,721,943.29. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, seven zero.
Seven zero, motion passed. The next order of business?
Roman numeral 10, Unfinished Business, there is none. Roman numeral 11, New Business, there is none. Roman numeral 12, Hearings, there are none. Item 13, Roman numeral 13, Matters for Executive Session, there is none. Last item, Roman numeral 14, Adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have adjourned at 8:08. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.